Okay, it'd be Monday, September, ah, January 7th, 2019. We opened at 5:30 and went into executive meeting. We're now out of executive meeting at quarter past 6:00. A reminder, this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first item on our open meeting agenda is a right of first refusal. Mr. Kierstet.
Right. We have one lot.
Do you mind, Russell, if you sit here where the speaker is? Because we don't hear it when it goes on cable.
And if you speak up a little for those of us with old ears, please.
We have one house lot of land to come out of Chapter 61A for sale. I don't know if you've seen the plans for it already and...
I haven't seen any plans, no.
You haven't?
No, I haven't.
All right, because I do have a copy of a plan.
Okay.
You can see. Maybe a small one.
If you want him, you can just stand right up here and he'll pick up on this and sort of talk to the plan.
I've never done anything. But there is a, this frontage on Upland Road. And this is an existing house, taking one lot adjacent to it for a house lot. We already have a purchase and sale agreement on the property, depending, you know, whatever happens here tonight.
Right.
And basically straightforward for that reason.
How big's the lot, Russell?
60,000 square feet, I believe it is. It's just 210 feet of frontage, I believe.
Great.
We've already had a perctus done on the property, so it does perct, so, you know, we know it's a billable lot for that reason.
Okay.
And it does run up along, like a split in the front and a well in the back, so I know that much about it.
Mike, you're kind of the expert on this. I mean, that seems fairly straightforward, I think.
Yeah, no, I think this is straightforward, and I think as we discussed in the past, what we need just to deal with the process that we're asked to do is the purchase and sale agreement.
Right.
And that is what will trigger our analysis of the situation. The main thing we'll have to do is have a public hearing. I mean, I think we're pretty clear, or I have the suspicion that this is going to be pretty clear, that we don't have interest in exercising our right of first refusal, but we do have a process to go through. I think as we discussed in November, we want to make this absolutely as easy as possible for the Kierstet family. I know it's a long process, but if you submit that purchase and sale to us...
I thought we'd already done that. I thought we gave that to Bridgette.
There's a file there that she left.
A couple of weeks ago.
Because I haven't...
They already have that.
If so, I haven't seen it.
I brought that up several weeks ago.
Okay. Now, I haven't seen it. We have heard from, I think, Concom and Open Space, who had an opportunity to review this.
Yep.
Our job, which we did back in November, is ask boards and commissions and committees to comment, and they felt there was, it was reasonable to not exercise our right of first refusal. In any event, what we have to do is have a public hearing, and I would propose to this committee that we schedule that for our next meeting, which is in three weeks, to get this moving as fast as we can for you.
I'm supposed to close on this on Friday. I thought it was just going to be a straightforward thing. I've already got lawyers and everybody involved with a closing for Friday.
So what does the public hearing do? Help me with that. Just that anybody can come forward and say, say what?
If anyone can express their opinion to us on whether we ought to or not to exercise our right of first refusal.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're required to hold that.
We are required to hold it. Look, and again, I think we're, our hands are kind of tied. I mean, if I had my druthers, we'd vote tonight and be done with this, but, you know, we've had some previous experience with doing this out of order, and we don't want to do it out of order.
Does the public hearing have to be, does it have to run in the paper?
Yes, yes, I think it does.
But it doesn't necessarily have to go in the Plimpton Town and Bag, because Express. Does it have to go one week before the hearing? I'm just wondering if we could try to pull something off for Thursday.
For Thursday?
For Thursday.
Oh, for this week?
For this week, for us to have a hearing.
Is it a public meeting or a public hearing?
It's listed as a public.
Because those are very different things.
It's listed as a public hearing.
Well, I don't want to leave tonight till I'm sure. That's what I have to do.
Right.
I can, I can pull up the document if...
Yeah, but you pull it up, Mike.
It'll take me a couple of minutes to find it.
This is what we did, maybe I'm getting closer.
Sorry, this is taking a little bit. Let's see, I can find it this way.
Do you want me to go to the office and see if I can find it?
Yeah, can I see if I can find it?
Some of this may be in here. This probably what we're looking for. This is procedure for Chapter 61.
Right, yeah, that's the document. That's the one. I can dig out the... So under Section C, it's the procedure for review of notices and evaluation. Upon a determination that a proper notice has been received, that is through the...
Purchase and sales?
Purchase and sale, the board of selectmen shall schedule and give notice of a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments on the importance of the property. Notice of the hearing is required to be given in accordance with Mass General law, Chapter 39, open meeting law. So we do have to go through the...
So is that a 48-hour notice? Or is it more so a two-week notice?
I think that's two-week notice.
Two-week? All right, this might know. Defound the document, Liz.
So in this document, the way, the way it's written, the stuff in italic is Mass General law that we have to follow. So in our policy and procedure, it says that a public hearing is required, notice of the hearing is required, in accordance with Mass General law, Section 23B, open meeting law. It goes on to say, "The board will notify Planning, Conservation and Open Space and assessors," which we have done.
Right.
And was triggered in November.
When I was hoping to see the planning board, but I'm not sure if they meet this evening or when I can find them. They have to sign all these forms on this plan also.
And in terms of us, we asked each of those to comment, and, you know, our part in this is the right of first refusal.
And I haven't heard any comment personally from any of the boards.
And everything that we've heard so far has been that they are fine with us not exercising our right of first refusal.
Okay.
Just one caveat here. I'm reading requirements for a notice of intent to town by property owner. It says that they, the time period begins with a notice of the landlord's intent to sell. Okay, so it's not, as I understand it, it's not that they have to have a purchase and sale, because in fact you could take land out of 61 and have no reason you wanted to sell it. You just wanted to get it onto the tax roll because you were thinking further down the line.
Yeah, it does say intends.
Right. Now, we have a letter as of October 30th from Margaret Kierstet, saying this is to notify the town of Plimpton Selectmen that I intend to sell one lot, as shown on plan submitted.
Right, I remember bringing that up there for...
Yeah, but the 120-day right of first refusal period doesn't begin until we've received all the stuff. And when we received that letter in November, we got back to the Kierstets saying, "These are all the items we need."
Right, all that's said is we don't need a purchase and sale agreement.
We do, in fact, need a purchase and sale agreement to trigger the 120-day period.
Not according to this.
Well, I thought that's what you went through with that, you just went through with that on the property, that prospect road. You have to wait to get that purchase and sale.
Right, we had to have the purchase and sales before we could do...
Well, you do have that for the, for this land here now, right? You do have a purchase and sale.
As of October 30th, we have a letter from Margaret Kierstet saying that.
Yeah.
And it's the intent to sell according to this. And that's what she's given us.
Oh, it does say here, it says...
Here's section, if you read C, Section B, it lists the things we have to have.
A sort of a copy and an executive purchase and sale.
Right.
Where does it say? This says, "A statement of intent to sell and convert."
And all the rest of the things on the list.
And everything else.
Which we informed the Kierstets about in November.
But again, it's either or. It's not you have to have an intent to sell. It's an intent to convert. And I don't disagree that you have to have these, but I think we have these. What we haven't done is had the public hearing.
Regardless, I need a public hearing before I can proceed.
Right.
So we need, how do we do that quickly? We just, who does it?
Having a public hearing?
Yeah.
I think we make a notice in the newspaper, we schedule it and have the...
So the selectmen or the planning committee, who does that?
That's the selectmen.
The board of selectmen.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. I mean, whatever needs to be done with planning in terms of it being a building lot is a totally separate issue.
Right.
And that you have to take up with planning.
Right. And I still, I have no idea what the schedule is, whether even meet or if they're even here this evening, I don't know. I don't try to plan that.
Somebody in that meeting room now, I don't know if it was them, the door was shut.
You should go downstairs, just take a look.
Yeah, so learn and process, we need the both of them anyways.
So do we need a motion that we go forward with a public hearing?
Absolutely.
I don't see a purchase and sales, but you said you gave it to Bridgette?
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, I don't see, that doesn't have to trigger the public hearing if we've got a letter of intent to convert.
Well, I think we can find the purchase and sales if Russell said he gave it to us.
I was pretty sure that actually Dave Bugbee had it.
Okay.
So I thought he was going to bring it up here.
It's not him that filed.
I don't think, we haven't seen it, unless Bree has it and she hasn't gotten to us, but...
All we've got is from people internal to the townhouse.
Could we schedule a hearing on good faith that Russell has the purchase and sales and that we will verify that?
Yeah.
And then for some reason, you know, something, we didn't have it, then we can cancel the hearing.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion. We schedule a public hearing for our next scheduled meeting, which I believe is three weeks from tonight.
So January 28th?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
Good.
And I can't close until after that. I mean, as long as, as long as that's a favorable review, I can't close until after that anyways.
That would be a legal matter that we can't give advice on.
Your attorney may, some attorneys, I think, are more lenient than others if they know that you have the public hearing date.
Yep.
Some are more apt to say, "Okay, well, we can close contingent upon..."
On favorable action.
I better speak with this guy then, because you're saying three weeks till the next meeting?
It's January 28th.
January 28th.
All right.
And we could do it right at, what, 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Yes, we do have Terry coming in.
Terry?
Walker.
Oh, yeah.
So we might want to do, well, that'll be quick.
Yeah.
This will be quick.
This will be quick.
So let's do 6 o'clock on the 28th.
Okay, so we'll advertise it and do everything you need to do, Russ.
All right.
Again, just, we want to make this as easy as possible, but...
And I'm sorry that...
I really was thinking that it was just going to be a three-minute call, and I was going to walk out, that's why I was...
Does he need anything else before the 28th? Like, say, Bree advertises and does everything. I just don't want him to get here and then it's like, "Oh, we didn't hear back from this board or that board." Like, is, are we good with every other part of the process?
I think the only other key I have to do is get signed approval on this from the planning board.
Okay, that's not part of us.
That's not...
I just want to make sure for us that...
But we just have to get the purchase and sales.
I assume planning board is going to say, do they have to go to conservation? Don't they automatically go and then just come back?
Is it an A and R plan?
I mean, there's no wet lens problem, but...
What's that?
Is it an approval-not-required plan? Are you just, are you dividing anything or...
Well, we're taking, we're taking land out of Chapter 61A.
Okay, so that's what the planning board's signing off on?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a small piece out of a big...
I wasn't sure if it was an A and R plan, because they only have 21 days to endorse those.
All right, all I've got, the things I got to do. And I'll be back in three weeks.
Perfect.
July 28th.
We'll see you on the 28th, Russ.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Russ. I'm sorry this is dragging out for you.
Yeah, I'm sorry it's got delayed.
This is the first page of the document that went that way.
Concom is okay with this, so we're fine with it.
All right, so that's the first page of that document, September.
Okay. Emergency appointment for the wiring inspector? Do we have?
Well, it's Scott Barley, isn't it?
Yes, it's Scott Barley.
For the remainder of...
For the remainder of this...
The year of the fiscal year?
Yes, through June 30th, 2019. And I believe he was already sworn in at the town clerk's office since it was an emergency.
Do we have appointments? Look, we don't...
So should we just ratify that decision?
It wouldn't be in there. I think it would be somewhere else. She did it.
All right, so this is a Class 2. These are all used cars. Hey, Dave.
David.
Has Ross been here?
Yeah.
He has.
Is he all set?
No, we need his purchase and sales.
I gave it to your secretary.
Okay, so she's got it?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
We have to have a public hearing, which is scheduled, going to be scheduled for January 28th.
Really?
Yeah. That's part of Mass General law, so we have to follow it.
Oh, okay. Didn't know that.
Yeah, unfortunately.
I wish you had told me that when I gave it to her.
We'll send you a copy so you have it in the future.
No, I'm okay now, now I know that.
No, no, but, you know, if something else comes up.
Yeah, okay, so...
Russell just went downstairs, I believe, to see the planning board.
Yeah, so what, you have a public meeting on it. How quick do you give approval to...
At night.
That night?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, what's that, three weeks from tonight?
Three weeks.
The 28th at 6:00 P.M.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see appointments, but why don't we ratify them?
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion that we appoint Scott Barley as the wiring inspector until June 30th, 2019.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's his last name?
Barley, B-A-R-L-E-Y.
You vote yes, Mr. Russell?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
V, V as in Victor.
Thank you. This minute's taking things.
Yeah, we want those tomorrow.
You'll have...
Probably will have. Actually, you'll probably have like 3:00 in the morning tonight.
Uh, no, 3:45, something else to do first.
Okay, next on our agenda is license renewals. So Angels Auto and Towing, vote taken, need signing. So we apparently did that previously?
Must have done that on the 17th.
Okay. So I guess we don't have to vote this one.
Nope, you have to sign everyone. This one goes to Liz.
No, she says she's got what she knows.
I'm all set with it. That'll just go back with all this stuff.
All right, so we are signing?
We're signing Angels, which was voted at our last meeting on the 17th. Actually, I have the draft minutes so I can verify.
She sent draft minutes, I thought?
You left draft?
Well, no, I mean, they're here, I'm sorry, they're on the top here.
Oh. She left draft minutes.
Left the license, okay, Class 2 Angels Towing. Yep, we did vote a Class, Class 2 for Angels.
So we voted all of these?
Yes. Well, we voted all of those, but not these two, because we didn't have complete applications from these guys.
All right, so we have two licenses. I'll make a motion that we approve a used car dealer's license, Class 2, to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles. Steven Craig doing business as Plimpton Service Center.
All right, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that one, we are approving the license?
Correct. These are both new approvals.
Oh, was the last one was a new approval?
No, that was just voting. That was just signing.
Okay. New approvals.
The next one is a used car dealer's license, Class 2, to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles for Roger J Randolph, Jr., doing business as Competition Autobody. So I'll make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Reminds me to give you these because we're going to see, you're going to see Bree tomorrow or whatever. Put them on our desk. Budget request, FY '20.
I printed a copy for you, John.
Yeah, I saw it. For our expenses, and it was distributed before, I didn't see anything to...
And these are just the numbers that I would input and give to FinCom.
I think the, most of these look like they're pretty well the same, with maybe a slight revision for the, for the weight scale.
So is weight and personnel already made that recommendation?
They've made it unofficially. They still need to meet and vote, so when I sent out the budgets, it was with the caveat that the number might change.
The only one that, I like the idea that we've increased the repair, repairs and maintenance because we've...
Yeah, let me look it up.
We've done a lot of work on the town, the old townhouse.
So that one is an interesting one because it's called, if I can find it.
Next to the last page.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's called...
Bathroom.
Yeah, utilities.
Does it say townhouse?
It's called Townhouse, but it's actually the building and maintenance account for this townhouse, the old townhouse, the exterior of the library. It covers all the large-scale stuff, if anything happens, at the fire station, and it will also be working for the new police station as well. So the name of it, I don't know, that's something I'm going to mention to FinCom because I think that's deceiving for people, and they might think like, "Oh, why do you need to up that amount for just the townhouse?" But it's all the town buildings.
Towns buildings.
Yeah, that's what it should be called, is town, town building maintenance. So I'm going to mention that.
And why is it just the library exterior? I was surprised when I saw that.
Um, that's traditionally what it's been, but I can tell you, for instance, on their heating system, they're having somebody come in to replace two valves with an issue that they're having. That'll be paid for out of this account. It's really everything.
I would drop the exterior. I think probably this happened because the library was not owned by the town.
Okay.
Okay, that way, yeah, we had a town, Public Plimpton Library Association.
Okay.
They turned it over to the town. Yeah, and so now we own the building.
I think we should just change it to just all, for all the town buildings.
Yeah, though I like the outline, so, because I'm not sure people know.
Right.
What we own.
Right. It also encompasses too, we'll have to add highway, because for example, they're having one of their heating units, the ceiling unit, failed.
Yes, yep.
And that's a few thousand dollars.
Right, that should be on here, too.
That'll be coming out of there, so we'll add that.
Yeah. I think a lot of people think the Historical Society owns the building there.
Yeah, we should clarify that for people.
Well, we're going to put up Plimpton Old Townhouse on it, I guess, at some point. So hopefully we got enough money there.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like a low number for all of that.
It does seem like a low number for all of that.
And I sort of highlighted it that it would be reasonable to ask for more for contingencies that will surely come up.
Some things will be done out of capital, hopefully, so that, you know, it won't be here to be in the water.
You know, it's just the inevitable stuff that comes up, the leaky roof, the, you know, stuff comes up.
Yeah.
I think FinCom would rather have us expend it and then go for a transfer.
Correct.
And beep it up.
Okay, I think we can see...
They said the same thing to me about the legal budget. They said, "Don't..."
Don't beep it up.
"...ask for the world and then not need it. We'd rather you ask for the bare minimum and then come for a transfer request if needed."
Yeah.
That's fine. And the key on this, I think, is being careful that we're not doing delayed maintenance.
Right.
And, I mean, if we're comfortable that we are, we're not delaying what should be routine maintenance, then I'd be okay with this.
I mean, do you think we should go up by even another $1,000 just to make it a round number?
Honestly, I think to, I think that would be reasonable, and it maybe gives us a little wiggle room to do the maintenance that, you know, tends to get put off year to year.
Well, and if we're looking to do some work up at the old police station, we're going to need more money.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I, that was the other piece, or I'm kind of assuming that that ultimately is going to be a separate warrant article on renovating there.
We might want it to be, that way the taxpayers know exactly what the money's going for, and it's not just an ambiguous maintenance, it's actually renovating that into a workable space.
10 grand to do all that maintenance on all these old buildings seems utterly reasonable to me.
The one thing I was thinking is monies could come from CPC if we had put it into the cycle, into the process, because that is historic. because that is historic.
The exterior certainly.
Why not the interior?
Potentially, potentially. If, well, certainly, if that were a consideration, unless there were an application this year, that would be an application for the next fiscal year. If the projects that are presently before CPC are approved, then we'll have no money until next year anyway.
Okay.
All right. I mean, you know, an application's good, it's still put in for this year, we could potentially get it done, but we can't do any more projects this year if we approve the two before us now.
It's just which pocket it comes out of.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right or left?
Do you need a copy of the plan? The planning board has two.
No, no, we actually have a copy of the plan.
No, this is the final plan.
Okay.
This is with the setbacks, the wetlands and everything.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have a copy.
We can have it.
If you have an extra, we'd be glad to have it.
Yeah.
Give you one of those. You want the big one or the little one?
The little one.
Just the little one, yeah.
Was the planning board down there?
No, they officially meet next Monday.
Okay.
But the secretary told me she thought two of the members would be here tonight, so they might have been here earlier.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Now, I gave your administrative assistant at DNS last week.
Okay.
We'll confirm.
It should be with your agenda.
We didn't see it, and she's been out with the flu, so we're not.
It's not in the file that she gave us.
She may have it in her office. We'll verify with her.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, we received from you a purchase and sale agreement last week. Yes. Because that's what triggers the 120-day period that we can review this. I gave it to her. Great. Okay. If you don't have it, please email me and I'll email a copy to you.
I'll, day after the meeting, I'll go down and look for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you. Okay.
Utilities, utilities next.
I'm okay with that. I had one other thing on this, the Selectmen expense page, which I think is page four, one, two, three, yeah. Again, I wonder if increasing particularly the communications line a little, we have $800 for communications, but we seem to constantly be in the situation that maybe we're feeling like we would want to communicate through some kind of mass mailing, and we never have it available. Sort of seems to come up every year. This may be another one of whether we want to include contingencies or simply go back to FinCom.
I think I had upped this one by 200. I'm pretty sure for the current fiscal year, we had 600, I think.
What was the, what's it cost to send out a mailing to the residents?
It would depend on, like, how many pieces, how thick it was, how you fold it.
Three or four, no, three or four things, pieces of paper in an envelope.
I don't know, probably.
I think it's in the $400 range.
I was gonna say 400, $100.
And I wonder if we couldn't increase it just that to give us the ability to do that.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
We'll have to get it by Liz, and then we have to get it by FinCom.
Right, make your case.
We are making our case.
Okay. And legal, we're up 10,000. Should we stay there based on FinCom?
I talked to Barbara about this. We pulled all the old numbers. It looks like for legal, in any given year, it's varied between like 45,000 and like 75,000. So I thought increasing it by a little bit, because some of the specialized projects that have happened, like the Atwood acquisition and different things like that, but kind of keeping in mind FinCom's theory on not wanting us to increase it by too much.
And I would just say we need to be realistic. We have a couple of litigations before us.
Oh, yes.
There we have the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
Litigation.
We still have Cisco abatement before us.
Right.
I would leave it where it is.
At the 60?
I think so, because I think Cisco alone has the ability to really mushroom.
Well, and so can the cell tower. That could be.
Yeah. The, I think, though, probably before we get into a final cycle with the budget, we will know, hopefully. Cross our finger, and then we can, if it turns out we don't need it, we can back somewhere. We okay beyond that? Very.
Yep.
Yeah, look good.
Okay, good. Thanks, Liz.
Appreciate Liz doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Town vehicle plan.
So we have, I have a breakdown essentially of what we have for the town-owned vehicles. I think it's easier if we kind of go by department and discuss it that way. So the fire department, the chief's vehicle is in somewhat rough shape. So what the chief is looking to do is discuss with FinCom and potentially add a capital item or look to do some sort of financing option for a new chief's vehicle, either for this upcoming budget cycle or the next one. It would be something like a payment plan, like five years or so. He did indicate that if we went that route, that it would be a working chief's vehicle, so rather than like the SUV, probably something more along the lines of a pickup truck with a, like a toolbox-type unit on the back that could hold gear, but also so that they can multitask with the vehicle if they need to bring large equipment to and fro, that kind of thing. And they would get rid of the 86 pickup at that point in time when the new chiefs, because they wouldn't have a need for two pickup trucks.
And they keep the SUV?
I think that they want to keep the SUV on for now.
Why do we need it?
They want it for their captains as more of an administrative vehicle if they're doing site inspections of the different establishments, to utilize to get people to and from training sessions, to kind of minimize people using personal vehicles. So they were proposing to get rid of the 86 pickup. We also have two brush breakers, and I believe we're going to be disposing of one of those in the spring or early summer. There's a grant program where they'll actually give you some funding towards some different gear options, and we might have some other pieces that are actually attached to one of those vehicles, to one of the brush breakers that isn't all that useful any longer, that we can sell off. So there's a plan for that, and it'll also free up some space in the station, and it'll work in that way. The old ambulance, the chief is still finalizing some plans. He has a good idea for reuse of that ambulance. I don't know if he's refined the idea yet, so I don't really wanna, you know.
Well, he told me he wants a new ambulance.
Not right away.
Okay.
He still has a few more years that he can get out of the primary ambulance.
So it's not necessarily in this budget cycle?
Correct, but for the second ambulance, the old one, the 2006, he has kind of a, he's working on an idea to unveil and see if people like it or not for reuse of that vehicle. So that's theirs. Council on Aging has the van. That's really aging. They had asked for a new van last year. We kind of put them off for a year. So I think that the conversation is going to come up again this year. And I think that that should be done with the caveat that the old one get traded in. Because they don't need two vans, and I don't think we really have a capacity to hire another driver. So get them a newer van that's.
That's handicap accessible.
That's accessible, and that's a little bit more.
That's gonna be big money. If it's handicap accessible.
We, you can't put handicap in the existing van, so it doesn't make sense. I think we just have to face up to it.
I can't believe there's no grant money for something like that.
Well, that's what we need to look at.
Wasn't there a local dealer that was interested in?
For the animal control, and so we were gonna see if.
No, no, Council on Aging, too.
Oh, that too?
A year or more ago, that came up, and we ought to pursue that, at least with a conversation.
So I'll talk to Joy and see if she can start pursuing some of that stuff now.
And would somebody like Habilitation Express, who transports people, do they ever sell off older equipment?
They might. That would be worthwhile to pursue as well, especially if those conversions have kind of already been made to the vehicle, if it's already been modified.
Right.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
On the town end, we have the Taurus that the assessor's office uses on a fairly consistent basis. And then we have the SUV that I use, other people from the townhouse use, the police department uses it anytime they're going to like an out-of-state training and things like that. So that one's kind of used by everybody.
So I'll go on my list. I don't see the need for the Taurus. I think a few times when there might be an overlap with two competing departments needing a van or a car, that they can get mileage. But having two cars to repair, register, insure, it just makes no sense to me. I think we've got too many vehicles to be given.
So I've been putting some thought into the vehicles after John voiced his concerns. We, when you stop and look at the whole big picture with the insurance and everything, we're not going to get a reduction or a price break if we take that vehicle off the rotation.
You're not gonna pay for it.
Yeah, but it's not, like, our rate is already set, like with those number of vehicles, and like Pat has one come off the rotation every year. So we're not paying really for the added vehicle when you look at the bottom line for the insurance. It's not.
If we deleted that from our insurance policy, the policy would not go down at one iota?
It wouldn't go down, because then he's gonna have another vehicle coming on and another one going off.
So maybe we should get the same thing. I mean, if we don't need the vehicle, it doesn't matter whether he's giving it.
That's where you and I have a difference of opinion. I think that the vehicles, both town vehicles are getting used an awful lot.
They know it.
Ironically, the police department uses both of those vehicles more often than what you would think when they have a need for an unmarked vehicle. I just think in the amount of time it would take me and manpower hours to go through the procurement process combined with the advertising, I mean, you're gonna get probably $200 for that car when all is said and done. And it's a huge process to dispose of.
It's not the cost, it's two things. First of all, I don't believe that they're being used that much, because I drive by here every day and they're sitting in the parking lot.
Could you, the car is what, roughly? How old?
It's a 2011.
2011?
Taurus.
Taurus.
So it's roughly eight, seven, eight years.
With a bunch of miles, because both those vehicles came off the police rotation.
Okay, and the SUV?
Is a 2012.
And same thing, a whole bunch of miles?
A whole bunch of miles, and they're in kind of rough shape. But we get deals when we fix them. Like, they don't charge us for the oil changes. Like, they do them all at once on the vehicles, so they just throw those in.
These are cars, or SUVs worth a few thousand dollars?
Yes.
In total.
Right, and there's been a lot of times, just even in the last few weeks, both those vehicles were not working a few weeks ago, and we had like, there were just several instances where the assessors were gonna go out and do site visits, and then I was going to a meeting over at DEP, and it was like, well, wait, who's using what? And then neither vehicle was working, and then.
So you get mileage?
You do, but that costs a lot, that takes a lot out of a budget, because it's almost like.
No, it's gonna be the exception, I mean.
It's almost 60 cents a mile that we have to reimburse. Honestly, for me, just from my perspective personally, I never put in for mileage. It's very rare that I would ever put in for that, because it's a pain to keep track of.
There's no reason for it.
Right, but when I don't use the car, like, say the assessors have it and they're doing things. If I go places, I'm not gonna nickel and dime the town and put in for mileage. It's also a pain to keep track of, and then you have to fill out a vendor report and everything. It's just easier to not put in for it.
Well, I don't know, you know, I guess we'll have to discuss it more. I'm not sure. You two, I just think we don't need it. I think it's an excess in that it doesn't look right when it's sitting there in the parking lot all the time.
Well, it sounds like at some point we're gonna be getting rid of that 86 pickup from the fire truck, right?
Correct, that'll be gone.
Is it, you know, can we do something maybe at once getting rid of, instead of doing one at a time? If we're gonna get rid of vehicles, do it all at one time?
We could. I mean, they'd be a separate process for each one, but we could try to advertise them together. But it would be a separate bid for each one.
If they're not really repairable, in other words, you know, why don't we just take them over to the scrap junk?
Because they're not technically junk. They're functioning vehicles.
Because they are repairable.
Yeah.
And they are being used.
They are repairable and they are being used. I don't think for a town of this size that having two vehicles available for use is excessive. I think if maybe you wanted to even group the fire department in, and when the chief, if he gets a new vehicle, have him get rid of the old one and kind of add them into the mix of using the town-owned vehicles, I think that's fine. But I don't feel that two vehicles is excessive when you look at things. But that's just my, I'm just one viewpoint. I mean, I'm not.
The fire department does have to go out and do inspections. They do the fire alarm inspections and other inspections around town. Wouldn't think it'd be on a daily basis, but.
It's not daily, but it's.
They do need to do that, and I think when they run errands, they use this vehicle as well, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, it's there, it gets used. It's one of those things that it seems like whenever one of them's not working or something, that's, of course, when everybody wants to use it, but.
And the assessors are in the mix using this as well?
They use the vehicles all the time.
Okay.
They're, it seems like every week they're going somewhere in one of those vehicles.
Either the SUV or the Taurus. Okay.
Why don't we move on on this? Okay. Talk it out some more in the budget process.
Okay.
So that's all the vehicles?
Well, then there's the police department ones, too. I mean, we can go through those if you want.
We have basically now, how many police regular vehicles, you know, that they ride around town in?
There are five in total.
Plus the chief's car? Aren't there more than five?
No.
Okay.
No, and when car 120 comes off the rotation in August, he could trade that in and go about it that way.
That'd be good. Okay, comments from Board of Selectmen regarding two CPC conservation, I couldn't have conservation now.
Community preservation.
Community preservation.
So I put my, uh, community preservation, Chair Cap on.
Thank you.
Two projects before us. Part of our application process is to seek opinions from board commissions and committees, and so we're seeking input from the Board of Selectmen about these two projects, which I think we sent out to you a brief description of them. One of them is sort of renewing the Open Space Committee pre-acquisition costs, which was so successful and so utterly necessary to be able to do the Atwood property. The other one is creating a modern development, a legally appropriate, accessible playground for the Bennett School, which the Bennett School Committee feels is absolutely essential at this point. So the.
So a little bit on the second one. They had come forward at a previous meeting here and said, you know, they wanted to do that. I thought I walked away that they were looking for grants, et cetera.
They did, and actually, the committee asked about that, and I checked in on that again. They feel like Jason Frazier in particular spent a lot of his own time looking, wasn't able to come up with any grants, ran into all kinds of things, that most of the grants were for larger, more expensive things, that some of the grants were for towns with less ability to pay, and that overall. and that overall he wasn't able to find anything that worked.
Okay.
He did comment in the most recent email exchange that if someone has information on grants that would qualify as a, they'd be welcome to take a look. But I feel like they did along the way look pretty closely, didn't come up with anything.
If, if something was to come up, do we have the ability to back out of something like this?
Yeah, we can just simply not spend the money and at some point CPC can vote it back into the general CPC fund.
Okay. Okay.
And, and the truth in the back of my mind is that, you know, even after town meeting, it may be along the way, this may seg into some other discussion tonight or another night, but if a grant writer came along that found something, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
We could certainly save the money or not spend the money.
Do you need anything beyond?
Really just the ability to report to CPC that the board of selectmen do not have objections to the project.
So I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Very good. I'll, I'll so inform now.
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Well, CPC will have a public hearing on this early March and we'll vote then. And it's likely they, unless something unusual comes up, CPC will be voting, will likely vote to recommend both of these projects to town meeting.
Okay.
Board goals for coming here, economic development. I'm not aware of anything.
No.
Financial management. Got the budget process going? I think we'll see how that shakes out. Public safety seems to be moving right along.
Moving along inexorably with surprisingly few issues, little, little hiccups along the way. But people, everyone involved is generally amazed that, how smooth it's been. Would you knock on wood, please, now that I said that? Thank you.
Great.
Probably a little behind schedule, isn't gonna be done by the middle of March, but not very far behind.
Terrific.
Grants, we have the lady coming in at our next meeting from Monterrey, so-
That is exciting.
Yeah. We hope she's as good as she sounds.
She does sound good.
Her reputation precedes her, so, yeah.
Maybe we discussed this a little at the last meeting and maybe it'll come out of the next meeting, but we'll need some sense on funding source if we, if we move forward.
Yeah.
I guess that'd be part of the budget process.
Part of the budget, yes.
Volunteerism? I had a great thought this afternoon and it- So it wasn't that great, because I can't remember what the hell I was thinking. But at the time, I was really pleased with myself.
You have to carry a little notebook, you write this stuff down.
Wasn't that, there was an issue, there was an episode of Mad Men, but the thing was, the guy at three in the morning had this brilliant idea. Fell asleep, woke up in the morning and they all shouted him, "Why didn't you write it down?" In that world, that creative world, it's completely understood that those sort of almost God-given moments of clarity that you don't let them go by, so.
I think we do that at times to get up, actually. But one time I did it, you know, so keep a little piece of paper and a pen right by the bed.
Write it down.
The next morning, I didn't know what the hell I was doing. I couldn't read it.
Funny.
Okay, technology, we're still, well, you have a little technology thing going on, right, with the-
Oh, sure. So Chief Dylan and I have been looking into fiber optics and what that would cost to get everybody linked up. So it would be the new police station, us here, library, fire, and even down to highway. It's a lot more reliable and it's a redundant system. So say if something went down at one end, then you would just get your, your connection and everything from the other end. So that's kind of how they market it, that it's very rare that you would be completely down and out without, without internet. So we're looking at doing that. Right now, the amount that we're paying for Comcast is about a thousand dollars a month, give or take a little bit each month. And this sounds like once online, it would be about 450 per month. So it is a cost savings, but I'm assuming that there'll be some unforeseen things that go along with that. So Pat and I have been going back and forth with the company that does it and just trying to kind of flesh out some of this stuff. There is an installation cost, obviously, with it, because they would have to bring it into all the different buildings. I guess there's already a connection point in this building for it, but we would get the public safety rate. So that's something, if we do wanna pursue that, we'd probably have to do a warrant article for the installation piece. You're probably looking at anywhere between like 15 to 18,000, all told, to get all the buildings wired, like turnkey ready to be on it. And then obviously you have that cost savings per month.
I think it's a no-brainer if the, if the numbers turn out right, because it's so reliable. And paying Comcast that kind of money, this would have, just quoting the numbers Liz mentioned, it would have like a two and a half year payback. And we'd be, you know, then, from then on, we'd be paying less than we would've.
Right.
So I guess it's gonna be in the details to whether or not it works. But we have fiber optic that runs by here now, but it's only for municipal-
Public safety.
Public safety. So that you can't, as a resident, you can't buy it. But municipalities apparently can tie into it. And it's already installed. It comes down the street. We have a, an access that comes right into the building in the bottom, from what they tell me. So I think it's very well worthwhile that we take-
There are towns out there that are using this instead of Comcast?
Correct, yes. And as a matter of fact, Silver Lake uses it. So we were talking with Steve Pello a little bit about it. He's their IT expert. And he said, you know, it's a lot more reliable, a lot more robust, a lot more user-friendly.
So why can't residents get it too?
Can't get?
Because it's expensive to run the lines. Verizon hasn't wanted to make the investment.
It is expensive. I was surprised that they included in the initial estimate they gave to Pat, they included highway. And I was kind of surprised by that. I thought that, that that's a good thing.
Yeah, but you know, we're so directly off the street that it's-
Right.
Such a shot run. It'd be great. I think it's, I'm glad you're looking into it. I think it's something that's gonna make a lot of sense for us if we can get into it.
So what's the next step on that?
Well, I want, Pat's the main point of contact with this company. I sat through one presentation that they did, but he's, has the direct contact. So I wanted him to go back, assuming if you're interested in pursuing it further, and just verify some of the numbers that they gave. Like I tend to be kind of type A, so I was looking at the write-up they gave and I said, well, wait a minute, we wanna make sure that it's clear that it's 450 per month total, not 450 per building.
Right.
There are just some little things like that that I'd like them to kind of reiterate. The other thing is that it talks about pricing for fiscal year 19. And obviously, we wouldn't be getting a system up and running until after July 1st. So I wanna make sure that they would honor those prices, especially for the installation. And then are we locked in? If it's the 450 per month, are we guaranteed that for a certain amount of time? Those are the types of things I wanna know.
I wonder if we could apply for a community compact, an IT one, to pay for this upgrade?
That's a great idea.
Be a great idea.
A great idea.
Certainly would improve our service to the residents because we've got more reliability, so.
I think that's-
Let's pursue that, too, if we're gonna do that.
I think what you might think too, once you lock down and feel very comfortable that you know, you might have them come in and make a presentation.
I was gonna say that. I think coming in and presenting to this board, also if we do decide to pursue it actively and we go to town meeting with it, I think we should see if one of their reps can come to town meeting. Because honestly, the stuff, when you start talking about like megabytes or gigabyte or whatever, I don't, you know, that stuff's kind of-
We could probably have Steve Pello, the Silver Lake IT expert, come in too to the town meeting, just to make sure.
If we all understand, yeah.
Yeah, Pat or I, that was our one kind of disclaimer. We, we don't wanna have to explain like the technical aspects of it, like the speed and everything.
So we're talking this building, the library, the new police station and highway?
And fire.
Okay, and fire, okay.
But not only that, that sets us up for this campus approach.
It, well, it does. And it may even open the door to getting it in the town so that people would have choice if we got it in this building. I mean, maybe just little bits.
Yeah, you never-
You never know.
And the special rate, if we lock in, so the whole thing is because of the police station. It's special public safety pricing. There was another company that Silver Lake uses that they suggested we reach out to and Pat did reach out. And they were very nice, very helpful, but they came right out and said, you know, you couldn't afford us. We don't give a public safety discount. We give other incentives, but none of which for public safety or like the town government side. So they said you'd be better off if you can get special pricing through this other network.
Well, thank you for reaching out.
One other thing, we may wanna check with Area 58. Just, there's been discussion about the technology to broadcast live and I don't know if-
Maybe, I'm thinking where some of this stuff is a little beyond me, technology-wise, I'm thinking if we firm up the numbers, maybe when we have them come in and meet with the board, we should invite Rich.
Absolutely.
And just kind of make sure we're all on the same page and that it's actually a good idea.
But one of the resources, Karen Foy, who's a member of Area 58 Board along with me, also knows this stuff inside and out. And it'd be worth having a conversation with her.
Okay.
She'll know the downside, if there is a downside to this.
They also have a fellow who's sort of the technical guy, Area 58. I can't remember his name. He's come in when we've talked about sound systems. It might be, yeah, no, not Rich, somebody who reports to Rich.
Chris Bowden.
Chris?
Chris.
Okay. So it might be even before the presentation to us, just have them separately meet and make sure that they feel comfortable. Or maybe have Steve in there too.
Okay.
And Karen, definitely. Because if there's anything we're missing on this, if there's some shadow in that she will know.
That's what makes me nervous about it and I think Pat feels the same way. We just don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves and think something's a wonderful idea and we're overlooking something that would be obvious to a technology expert, but that's not for us.
Yep.
Good question.
Sure.
To the chair, this would be for your phone and, or for your internet and phone, or just the internet?
It's just internet, from what I was told. I don't know if there's an option to, for phone or if it would make it so that if you did one of the, is it the VoIP that we discussed before? If it would make that more viable, I'm not sure.
It'd be a question of whether that company offers it.
So we can find out.
The technology would be there, it would be kind of a no-brainer, but they may not do it. They're not gonna do it just for us, that's for sure. But, good question, we need to find out. Okay, I think Liz, it's your updates and correspondence.
Okay, so for my-
Could I just, were, were we at some, sorry to interrupt. We, at some point, we're gonna update our 2019 goals.
Yeah, how do we wanna, we need a workshop type thing where we sit down and talk it out.
Could we do a working meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
What, before our next meeting?
Yeah, I would think so. If three weeks is a long time.
You take off, don't you?
Yeah, first three weeks in February. But you guys can do stuff without that.
But next Monday is, is that a holiday?
No, the following one.
Maybe we meet next Monday. Going to meet at like 5:30? Want to look at your schedules first? I mean, it's only gonna take us maybe an hour, if that's all we're gonna do.
I can fill it first out.
Okay, I'm now, now I'm not available? Oh goodness, something came up.
I got five minutes worth.
I know, me too. And that'll be stretching and out, a lot of ohs and ahs.
But it's a quality five minutes.
I mean, I was gonna say, maybe we wanna share during the week, but actually I think we probably can't do that or shouldn't do that.
You could share with me and then I could distribute if there's any repeat ones.
I'd rather talk mine. I don't wanna be shut down too quickly.
You don't want us to have a chance to gang up on you?
Right, exactly. You gotta gang up on me anyways, but-
So this would be a working meeting that would not need to be televised.
I wouldn't think so, no.
And obviously, it's an open meeting, so why wouldn't it come? But really, we'd like to just bounce ideas off each other and I'm not sure-
And at the end, we'll report back on it.
That, that's up to them.
Right.
We'll make sure it all gets reported back on and-
Yeah, we'll have to still take minutes.
And, and no, and we'll do all that and of course, citizens are welcome to come if they want.
I would think that would be a good idea because I think it's about time we see if we're on the same page.
Okay. All right, so you wanna do it next, the 14th at 5:30?
Whatever works. My calendar's much easier than yours.
Does it work for you more?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so it works for me.
All right.
I booked it.
Fourteenth, what's that?
Fourteenth at 5:30.
5:30, okay.
So a week from today, same time we met today.
Okay. Do we wanna just talk or do, would you like to see something written to work from? I mean, do we put it in writing before we come in? Or just come in and say, here's where we think we're going?
Well, you should probably write down your own ideas, but, yeah, then we'll just chat.
Why don't we share our ideas and out of that, we can synthesize it into a document?
Okay, great.
Okay.
So I have a dream. Liz, you're up, I guess.
So the Green Communities work is somewhat wrapping up. We just processed a little over 163,000 invoices for them.
Nice job.
So that's moving right along. They still have to do the plug load projects in the various town buildings and they have to finish work on the heating project over at the fire station. Sort of separate and aside from that, I am meeting with them. I have two different meetings on Wednesday to actually talk about if it's feasible to look at applying for funding next year. I don't know timeline-wise if we're gonna be able to do that because I believe you need all of your final disbursements from the state to have been received in order to apply. And the application deadline, from what I was told, they think it's going to be sometime in February. So, you know, I don't know if it'll work, but in case it does, I wanna be prepared and know what projects we can apply for. And I was also planning to make arrangements for them to tour the highway building and just see if there's any projects that could be done there as well. And then another one that came up that they mentioned to me from Old Colony Planning Council is, I guess, this past year, they funded some projects for setting a town up with an electric vehicle and a charging station.
Yeah.
Not, not to drive John nuts talking about more vehicles, we're gonna bring on another one. But I thought that that would be a really kind of neat project if we could get funding for that. And then we can trade in all of them and just have the-
Why don't we get bikes, those little blue bikes like they have?
Yeah, or like Fred Flintstone. But no, I thought that-
I guess I get 50 miles per gallon.
That's incredible. A lot of towns are going for those too.
You see, the state though now is not going to, they've been giving rebates.
Yeah.
But they will only do it for fully electric now. They won't do it for hybrids.
Okay, so we'd have to have a charging station?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I think from what they said at Old Colony, I mean, I got the five minutes or less version from them, but they were saying that some towns, like if you do apply for that funding, they need to fully equip you with the charging station and the vehicle and it's just something, I don't know. I think that's very like forward-thinking and would make a better impression on people than, you know, some of the big gas guzzlers that we have on the rotation. So we're looking into that. I had sent something to Rich Bowen about doing that session that the board had talked about, kind of that help session with all the different boards and committees. He responded to me with the date of Wednesday, February 5th at 5:30.
You guys?
If that seems good- If that seems good, I'm going to have him go with that, but if it's not good, we could also try to push it to the end of the month when Mark's availability opens up a little bit, or, or not, I mean.
I don't want to hold anything up, so if that one works, it's, it's fine.
I printed out, you saw this, that was how we did it last time. And I think we just copy, copy that and send it up.
Okay.
To all the boards and committees, see who shows up. There's a list of who showed up on the second page, the third page.
Okay.
And you said that was 5:30 on the fifth?
Yes, it's a Wednesday.
Okay.
And then the other thing, the district local technical assistance grant funding, that's available again. The deadline, I believe, is at the end of next week, I think.
What is that, what does that cut?
It's technical assistance from Old Colony Planning Council, so it's similar to what we received for the comprehensive permit regulations that they did for us.
Okay.
And then they're still putting the finishing touches on our master plan. We should have that, I don't know, within another week or so. They sent me some ideas for projects and one of them was for assistance applying to be a housing choice community. It could do a little research of what that's, what that entails and everything, but I think that would kind of align with our housing production plan and would sort of put us out there that, you know, we are looking for housing opportunities so long as they align with, with the town's priorities and with our plan. Another thing that they suggested was a complete redo of our zoning map and to kind of update it and work through that process because that would need town meeting approval. So we would need to, they would, if we apply for funding for that, that's something that they'd have to get started on right away if we were awarded. And they'd have to work, obviously, with the zoning board and planning board to put together a product to be approved by town meeting. So that would be kind of a quick hit item.
You'd also want to include the bylaw committee in that.
Yeah, yeah, we would let them know. I mean, they would, they'd be the ones doing all the stuff, so my guess is that they would hold a workshop probably with those boards and it's a very public process. It's, it's the same process as if you do a zoning bylaw amendment. So it needs a planning board hearing and.
Would that be aimed at this year's town meeting?
It would, yes.
Yeah, because very much so, bylaw committee's working on that right now, so that.
So if they need help updating the map, this was for the map, it wasn't to.
Yeah, yeah.
Do the zoning itself, but to get the map updated and.
No, and they're two different things, but bylaw is certainly looking at what you can do or better defining what you can do in each zone.
Right, the law chooses.
That makes a lot of sense.
So maybe the updated map, like, I can say, seeing zoning maps from a lot of different places and then coming here and looking at ours, it's hard to read and kind of figure out where you're at. So it might be nice just even to get a nice map of the town that's very clear and.
Will it eventually be like an electronic copy too?
Yeah, everything they do is like that too, and then we could put it up on the web and.
Okay.
Have that, but, so if you want, I can apply for that. Last year, they funded two projects, so I don't know if you want to do that and one of the housing ones. The other option would be, and I don't know if this is kind of too far outside what they do, but I was wondering if to follow up on our master plan for the campus, if we should ask for the services of almost like a traffic engineer and a landscape architect and see if they can simply look at traffic flow in this parking lot with the new police station, with the fire station, the library, and simply look at vehicles and pedestrians and how, how the parking lot and the throughways and everything should be best configured and maybe add some green space in.
That's number one on my head list.
So to come up with an actual plan?
Yes, and say, like actually look at how many, maybe they would have to do almost like a mini traffic count here to see at any given time how many vehicles are coming in and out.
Yeah.
Parking spaces.
And how many parking spaces, and then they could help us too with compliance, making sure that the spaces that they do map out are the required width and length and.
If that's available, it's number one. My, my goals for master, or goals for 2019 and master planning is still absolutely tops there, so.
Well, then let's do that.
That one, I, but I, I think certainly the previous one also is just.
I'd like to know more about the housing initiative.
Me too. I did some research, but I wasn't sure. I also don't want to get us into something where.
We're on some list.
We're on some list and then people start coming forward with projects and we're like, "No, no, thank you. We don't want that, that doesn't fit." I don't want to put us out there if we're not.
But those other two sounded really good, the zoning map and the.
The parking one I.
Or, you know, the plan for the.
I don't know if they'll fund that one or not, or if it's too far outside, because they do give you guidance and they have their kind of priorities too, but it doesn't hurt to apply.
Okay. Would there be any money for them to look at Main Street and Ring, or is it Crescent? What is that?
No, Main Street and Ring.
Main Street and Ring?
Yeah.
That, to maybe come up with some plans on how best to curb speed in there or maybe now they're.
For that one, I almost think we'd be better off going through the highway department and having them actually hire an engineer to.
Well, we've done.
I think that one needs, is that the one that has the study done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I think we're just in a spot where we need to decide, do we want to have.
We need an alternative though.
I, I would really like an alternative, something.
So maybe they could go back to the, or hire a different engineer to kind of peer review that design and come up with a different alternative.
I think we should ask Scott to go out and look at how other towns have done it.
Okay.
Especially if we can do it through some sort of a planning council. The state maybe would come down and help us without us having to spend a lot of money.
But if they don't, we need to do it in time so that we could do a warrant article.
Yeah.
We needed to hire somebody.
We've got to get that done, it's a mess.
It, it does need to be done.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so it's not going to work with OCPC, but these other two sound like really good.
Potentially OCPC.
Yeah, potentially.
For, for the minutes, this is, what's the name of this blank, blank, local grant?
D-L-T-A.
Division of Local Technical Assistance.
Local grant?
Local Technical Assistance, yes.
And that falls under whose umbrella? The whole colony?
Yes.
Yeah, OCPC.
Yeah, they do really good work.
They do do, do good work.
So one more time, division of?
Division of Local Technical Assistance, D-L-T-A. Liz, I put in the date, 2/5, and that's a Tuesday.
For the.
It's a one with Rich, the meeting with Rich.
He had said to me Wednesday.
Okay, maybe we should.
Let me verify with him.
Yeah.
It may have been one of those, I think when the email came, I'm pretty sure now that I'm thinking that it said Wednesday, February 5th.
Okay.
So let me.
He's a little.
Yeah. Tell him to go to 2019.
Yeah, exactly.
Correspondence, all I have is the Plimpton-Halifax Express. They had a very interesting write-up. It was kind of a 2018 in review.
They had the recap.
Yeah, it was very nice.
It was very nice.
Nice. I saw my brother-in-law got first caption there, John Shay, the.
Oh yeah, very nice. That was very nice.
Okay. Anything else we need to chat about before we close? We got?
Now you have to hold the minutes. It looks like she's gotten done, but we'll have to get them to us.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm serious.
Yeah, I didn't get them.
I didn't get them.
Okay, there being no further business, I'll make a motion that we close the open.
I don't have a rant or a rave, but.
Well, my rave would have been the, the service for Bob Carling. It was very nice, it was very well-attended and how it was very impressive to have a Plimpton Cruiser there with the lights on, right out front, and having Doug Mazzola at the door with his robes on, you know, full dress, opening the door for people. It was really very nice.
I apologize for not making that and I'm so glad you went.
Yeah, it was a really nice time.
It was very nice.
Yeah, it was really impressive and to really send him off in style, so that was nice.
My rave also is the family scene really honored that Selectman showed up. I'm glad that the rave will do that.
So, yeah. All right.
I don't have a rave or a rant. I'm just going to go home and have a glass of wine. So make a motion.
I'll expand my rave just a little bit. Bob was a talent.
Oh my gosh, was he.
A big personality and we truly be missed.
Absolutely, we will be sorely missed. He always was, had a joke and, yeah, he was a very good guy. A lot of fun.
Put a lot of time into the town.
Oh my gosh, yeah. Many years, many years and wore a lot of different hats, so he will be sorely missed, that's for sure.
So I'll make a motion that we close the open Selectman's meeting for January 7th.
I'll second.
All those are paid?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, John.